Good afternoon. And welcome to the City of Helena and County Administrative Meeting, January 6, 2022. At 4:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Adam Clark, would you take the role, please?
Uh, City Attorney Joden is not here for the record, Mr. Mayor. Uh, City Manager Harlow Schultz. Here. Uh, CAO Roger Pauls.
Here.
Uh, City Commissioner Sean Logan.
Here.
City Commissioner Emily Dean.
Here.
City Commissioner Melinda Reed.
Here.
City Commissioner Eric Fever. There he goes.
I am here. By the way, I heard that, uh, "you're on mute" is one of the 10 most overused and unpopular phrases of the last year.
Thank you. City Commissioner, uh, County Commissioner Jim McCormick.
Hello, I'm here.
County Commissioner Andy Kuntzen.
Here.
County Commissioner Tom Rolf.
Here.
I'm here too.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'm getting used to the new order of things. So, uh, Mayor Collins.
Here. So, um, well, I, um, want to take this time to, um, welcome and introduce our new commissioners to this body. Commissioner Melinda Reed and Commissioner Eric Fever. This is the city and county, uh, session that we, we have some common issues and common goals that we, uh, we meet and we try to work through them. We meet once a month and, um, work through those goals and issues. So, welcome. Do you have any words? Commissioner Reed?
I'll just briefly say I'm delighted to be here. It's nice to see everybody again. I have been at some of these meetings in a slightly different capacity, but I'm looking forward to working with you moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Fever?
Well, I haven't worked with you at all in the past. I think it's interesting. The first meeting I attend is of the city-county joint meeting. Um, but I am looking forward to a, uh, to leadership in this, um, uh, in this commission and I'm think that the city and the county have so much to deal with to will do a good job on comp.
Thank you. Okay, so I got the wrong agenda here. Okay, my apologies. Commissioner comments and questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner?
I would just, uh, like to take a second to welcome both Commissioners Reed and Fever to, I think this is their first meeting and, and, uh, glad to see them and looking forward to the new year. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from, from the discussion from the commission, both city and county?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, welcome Commissioners Reed and Fever. Um, looking forward to working, uh, with you and, uh, the City of Helena, other commissioners on, uh, projects, uh, interest and issues, uh, common to, uh, our, our two governing bodies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Mr. Vice Chair, you wanna go first?
It's a pleasure to see you both. We're looking forward to working, working together and, uh, I think there's a lot of things that we can, we can joint venture on that'll make a difference for the people in our, in our, uh, community.
And, Mr. Mayor, just welcome as well, and, uh, it's been well said. Looking forward to a great year with all of you and, uh, happy new year. Welcome aboard, you too.
Thank you. Any others? All right, we'll move along. Department direction feedback needed, IT and S update.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners James Thomas from IT and Services. Um, fairly new director here. I'm just approaching my third month, uh, with the county. If everyone is ready, I've got a, uh, fairly brief presentation to walk through. It's about 26 slides long. Um, kind of run through what we do for IT for the, uh, city and county.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, before we get started, just want to do a quick overview, um, of, uh, ITNS with the group here in the larger picture with, uh, Commissioner Dean. Um, uh, as part of the ITNS board and the bylaws, we meet routinely with the county to talk over the ITNS system that we have and across the city and county. We have a number of agreements, interagency agreements, and, um, one of those is obviously ITNS, and James has been with us about three months. As part of the last budget process, the City Commission agreed to fund a position. That position, um, resulted in us being able to hire another, um, hire an, uh, our, our new director, James Thomas, who comes from, uh, the state of Montana, and he was in the, um, Department of Justice and, uh, specifically in IT. So he has, um, a sp- very broad set of, of skills that he's bringing, in particular, policy and budgeting, um, which I know we've had lots of questions in the City of Helena. And, um, I appreciate James being ready to jump into the fire right out the chute, share what's going on three months in. So I just wanted to just give a brief overview of our interactions with James and Roger overall. Both of us have been, um, on the same page in the hiring. Roger and I were very closely with, um, with James in trying to get further detail on the services and, um, I'll turn it over to you, James, and thank you, Mayor, for to jump in there for a minute. And Roger, if there's anything you'd like to add.
James, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, let me see if I can get the right share going here. Okay. Hopefully, I'm sharing the correct screen and you're seeing the slide for our, uh, base presentation.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, we'll dive right in. Okay, so organizationally structured, um, we are broken up into five functional areas. Um, this is a very standard design for IT teams. We're broken out into our operations, uh, networking, phone systems. Uh, group works up through the, uh, Operations Manager, Chris Sinrude. He's got a number of years with county. Our help desk, customer support, uh, the desktop environment, um, manager is Jen Carlson. Our application side is GIS. Um, they manage the GIS system, addressing, and they do some web support. Right now, we're operating without a web person, and so Jason stepped up to the plate and handled some of that. Uh, recent addition is our security team, which is a team of one, but, uh, Chris Sylvanen, he is our security officer. And then we've got our administration side, uh, myself and Bernie Miles. Um, City Manager Rachel Schulk, uh, Hardlock Schulk, sorry. Uh, gave you a little bit of background. Um, I come to the county after 24 years in state government. Um, I spent 15 years with the Department of Justice, um, as a bureau chief. I oversaw the day-to-day operations of the Department of Justice Data Center. We had network connections across the state. Um, we also did the help desk functions. Um, so on the technical side, that's what I did technically. We managed roughly a budget, uh, for the Department of Justice that's of similar size to the city-county, what we have here in IT. And, uh, reported, um, upwardly through the, um, legislative process, uh, our budget and some of our IT functions. Um, just for background, one of the bigger projects that I was heavily involved with was to bring the Montana Highway Patrol into the digital age, where we actually put a laptop, a printer, and the ability for the patrol to accept credit card payments right at the car. So that was one of the bigger projects that I was involved with. As I'm running through slides, please, um, use the raise your hand feature or dive in and interrupt if you have any questions. I'm happy to address anything. Okay, we'll go through the five areas. Um, we're gonna do our, our help desk. We'll go in this order. Um, the operations team, the GIS team, security operations, and then administration, and we'll finish up with a little bit of info on our budget. Onto the help desk team. This is our frontline IT support. Uh, these, this is the team that provides eight to five support for a broad range of IT services, software and hardware. Anyone has printing problems regularly, problems with Zoom, this is the group that generally answers the phone and gets you some help. This team also orders and configures new IT equipment for city and county staff. Uh, they've created and maintain and they deliver, uh, new employee computer orientation for new staff. So they schedule a time with new employees that have not been with city or the county, and they kind of run through common, uh, features of the computer, where the icons are, how to find your printer, a few things like that. They manage the annual computer replacement program. So we run on a four-year cycle. So roughly every year, we're replacing, give or take a little bit, but about 175 computers out on the desktops. They also manage an IT, uh, equipment rental and checkout program, and we'll go into that. Uh, that's one of the, they've, they've modified it a little bit here and moved it to a subscription-based solution called Check Room. And this utility is designed to give them reservation so that they can see who's reserved, uh, particular pieces of equipment. It also interacts with whoever has that equipment, um, that they have checked something out. It lets them know that it's due back or that it's late. And it's got a, a little agreement kind of, uh, design. Some of the equipment that we do have, we've got laptops that are available for checkout. Um, one of our newest devices is called an Owl. Um, I'm in, I've been thoroughly impressed with the Owl. Uh, this is really designed for the current environment, and it was designed during the pandemic and brought to market. Uh, it works fantastically well when you have a hybrid, some of the team in a conference room and some of the team out on Zoom or, or Teams meetings. Uh, at the top of the Owl, there is a 360-degree camera. Um, does a pretty good job of zeroing in on and picking up who's talking. Um, it's got an omnidirectional microphone, picks up pretty good conversation all the way around a fair-sized room. And it's very good on the speakerphone. So it's usually pretty easy to hear folks that are, uh, interacting with the meeting. And it's very easy to set up. Um, it's almost plug-and-play, and then you choose the device, uh, as soon as you start your meeting, and it works almost seamlessly. Uh, we've also got monitors that we check out. So a lot of people, and they need to do a, a work from home or work from a remote location, we can check out monitors. And then we've got the projectors as well. Okay, on to the operations team. Um, they provide eight to five and after-hours support. And so when we have a, a building that may be working on the weekends, um, for example, the transfer station, um, we want to make sure that that building or those functions that need computer interaction work, uh, seven days a week. So they do respond to after-hours support. This group maintains and upgrades, uh, replaces when needed, uh, roughly 100, $1.5 million of network and communications equipment across the city and county. Their primary goal on the network side is to support the city and county high-speed network. They do this using the most efficient means possible. Um, so they use wireless point-to-point communications between buildings, and they've also got Wi-Fi within buildings, uh, makes it much more convenient. They've got cellular communications that route it back into our network, into the internal network. They also have two dedicated fiber optic lines that we support, and they've got some traditional, uh, copper connections as well. The system side of the team maintains the servers, uh, physical and virtualized, that support a lot of the county and city operations. Um, this is the on-prem environment. Uh, we are hybrid here in the city, in the county, city and county, so IT side. We've got some services and functions that are cloud-supported, and we've got some on-premise, um, equipment still that supports critical functions. Some of the virtual servers support the file storage, printing, document imaging, and some web applications. And of course, we do backup and archiving. And of course, we do backup and archiving. This, the systems team provides support and management for the central ERP system, which is the budget, finance, payroll for both right now, city and county. They also provide the VoIP, voice-over-IP phone system. And that phone system contains 10 phone servers in itself that provide the phone service and fax to over 700 phone users. They've created a partnership with the customer service team, customer support team, that provides the email service through our government cloud portal, which is Microsoft. One note about the phone system, a little later in the presentation, we'll get to our IT assessment that was done in 2018. One of the items the assessment recommended was to look at a cloud-hosted phone solution. Through an analysis, it was determined that the on-premise phone solution was still the most cost-effective. So that's why we do maintain the servers and the team that supports those devices. Here's a quick look at our network map, just very high level, of all the areas and the locations, buildings that we have connected to what we call the backbone. You can see the 10-mile water treatment, which is the base in McDonald Pass. We go all the way out to Lincoln County Sheriff with the wide-area connection, all the way then up to Augusta for a nurse station and the sheriff. We also have connections out to East Helena and all the way out to the city landfill. It encompasses 52 buildings and 37 sites. These are mixed with all the technology that I mentioned. We've got cellular connections, we've got traditional copper connections, we've got radio or wireless between buildings. And we've got our couple of fiber links that are downtown in Helena. Okay, moving into our third area, which is our GIS team or geographic information systems. They manage the environment for the hosting of geospatial data services and applications. It's easy to think of GIS as maps. They do a lot with maps and mapping of points. They manage a geo database for the Helena and East Helena city limits. It's got the city and county zoning, fire districts, roads, emergency service boundaries, special districts, all kinds of important data, data points. They provide the technical support and assistance of the GIS tools and the web map applications. They maintain up-to-date city and county addressing, including the creation of new addresses and road names. They maintain one of the most important facets of GIS that is leveraged is the Master Street Address Guide. And this is used by the city and county for emergency responses. So they generally, city and county emergency does not go to Google Maps for the most part to find a location. It's much more accurate to go into the GIS system. The city and county GIS provides access to their aerial imagery as a service. And a note on the aerial imagery as a service, every five years, they provide or they contract with a company to do a flyover, which provides much more higher-resolution area maps. Their resolution that they go for at a minimum is a six-inch resolution. And to give you a comparison, they put it in all pixelated. It's difficult feature. Google Maps uses a resolution between 15 and 30 meters per pixel. The res-
Excuse me, is it only, is it my computer? But see, I hear you breaking up, Mr. Thomas. Is it bringing up only for me or for the rest?
Solution is shape, image for a lot of is about-
Okay.
Back, we lost for a little bit there.
Yeah, I know you were breaking up quite a bit there.
Oh, my apologies. Okay, I cannot tell if I'm still sharing.
No, you're not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get my share restarted here. There we go. Okay, Mr. Mayor, how far did I make it through the comparison to Google Maps?
Well.
Or anyone that-
I would say you were just getting the contrast before you started breaking up.
Okay, I'll, I'll cover that again. Thank you. So comparison of the flyover, which is done at a six-inch resolution minimum. Google Maps uses between 15 and 30 meters per pixel. 15 meters per pixel turns out would be 590 inches. So the aerial imagery is about 600 times better resolution than if we were trying to rely on Google Maps. So that's the basis for why we do the aerial imagery. And the planning division uses this incredibly heavily. Something I don't want to miss is we still provide hard copy maps. So they print out large format, hard copy maps, not very often, but it is still occurring. Okay, so here's a quick little video of looking at GIS through layers. So you start with a base layer, you can add plats, and you'll add the roads. And then finally, you'll add your noteworthy features of buildings, parks. And then you get a finished full-layer map. GIS team and myself kind of like this little saying of ogres like onions. Onions have layers, but GIS has layers. Okay, into security. My security officer, myself, came up with this quote. We actually found the quote. We like it because it connects cybersecurity and that cybersecurity is not just an IT issue. Just like you wouldn't think of a nation, a personnel or workforce issue is just HR. There's a whole, it's kind of everybody's responsibility. And that's where you went with this one. Alrighty, so we'll take a look at our cybersecurity stance over the last three years. This is from a National Cyber Security Review. Basically, our cybersecurity officer, Chris Sylvanen, inputs a lot of data and it runs the information through the NCR. And they base this on the NIST standard of the cybersecurity framework. So in 2019, this was our baseline look. Very much just, we had, we had minimal functions here in the cybersecurity arena back in 2019. In 2020, we had made some headway. This was after the assessment, so we had started putting in some new tools. In 2021, we made some pretty significant changes. So we've actually exceeded the minimum risk finally on a number of them. We still have a little bit of work to do in the recovery area. When we put them all together, this is kind of how it looks for 2019, 2020, and 2021. And cybersecurity is one of those functions that you're never quite done. Even when you've got things at a very high mark, you feel like you're doing pretty good. There's still more to be done. Cybersecurity threat landscape is changing faster than we can really keep up with. So the work is never really done. So this will be ongoing. We came up with a quick cybersecurity quiz. We thought this one would be kind of fun to pose. So the question is, who is legally responsible for the security of the data? Any takers on answers? Okay, won't hold us up too far.
Oh, we all are.
Thank you, Commissioner McCormick. The answer is legal responsibility, the data is the data owner. That begs the question of who is the data owner? And actually, at the state level, I've encountered this one multiple times. Numerous folks feel the data owner is, is the IT departments because IT holds the data. But it, as we get to the data owner, the answer typically comes out through a federal investigation that it is upper management. Generally considered data owners. So we did look at it in the structure of the city and county. And we did find it would be high-level management, commissioners, county administrative officers, city manager. So what is the role of IT in the security? Well, the answer is, we are to advise management of potential gaps in the security program and make recommendations of what controls to implement. I like to think of it that IT is, we are stewards of the data. We help to make sure that you've got access to the data when you need it. But ultimately, it is highest-level management's decision of how you want to protect that data. Okay, the last of our five focus areas, probably the least technical, but the administration part of it. Administration, myself and Bernie Miles, we provide the budget management planning services for the department. We do create technology procurement requests for the department and customers. We do a technology review and oversight of services and technology requests that they come in from the departments. We do provide project management oversight and assistance where needed. We oversee the technology contracted services that are housed within the department. And I can attest to this one, I do plenty of memo, excuse me, meetings. Haven't done many memos yet, but I do plenty of meetings.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Do you mean for us to see your notes or you want to switch to the display screen?
Well, my apologies. I thought I was on the display screen. We'll see if I can change that. Well, I'm not going to hold us up so you can see my notes.
Okay.
Alrighty, so the services we provide, we covered what we provide. So what don't we do? We don't develop new software. We work with the departments to assist with procuring commercial off-the-shelf software or providing vendors who can commit resources to department initiatives. We cannot provide dedicated project management. We do work with the departments to find project management resources and will assist where we can. I worked very heavily with the city's project manager, Tyler. But project management, if you were to ask Tyler how much time he spends on each project, it's consuming his eight-hour day on just a small number of projects. They have big projects, but it consumes his time. We do not provide business-level process or software recommendations to departments. We're not the business experts, but we will provide assistance wherever, wherever needed and when requested. We don't provide support for special or unique department software. We kind of get in a little over our heads, but we'll, we encourage the departments to maintain the support agreements with the vendors. Okay, so our governance, who is above basically me as the director? I report equally to the city manager and the county administrative officer. And we have a quarterly meeting with the IT steering committee, which is an advisory group of appointed city and county department directors. Then we go upwardly to the IT board, which consists both of the city commissioners and county commissioners, the city manager and the county chief administrative officer. And uniquely, this has a citizen at large. So it has a member of the public that is on the IT board. That group also meets quarterly and is the approving body for all IT strategic and budget decisions. The IT, as the IT director, I'm a non-voting member on both of the groups. I provide information and staff recommendations for the group to consider. Okay, funding, my apologies, I need a drink. How are we funded? We're funded with a combination of fixed costs and elected costs. The fixed costs are paid for every city and county employee. This cost covers the network connectivity that we need to connect the sites to each other and to connect basically to the outside world for phones and internet. The elected costs are what the department can choose for each employee. So endpoint compute, think of it as everything on the desktop, whether it's a computer, PC, or a laptop. All the hardware, and that's on that four-year replacement cycle. This also includes IT security. Then we've got user account services. This includes help desk support, network servers, print services, data storage, backup and recovery. The endpoint computer and user account services kind of go hand-in-hand. You can't really have one without the other. We also have the Office 365 Portal. This is designed to provide the email and office productivity software and services. We break out phone services separately. The basic structure of this is, we don't want to charge, let's, let's, for example, say a plow truck driver who doesn't really ever use a computer. We don't want to charge him for the computer services. So that's what the attempt has been with, with breaking out the costs. Okay, I had mentioned our IT assessment. This was completed back in September of 2018. It brought along 62 recommendations from the contractor who interviewed IT and business lines. As of the second quarter in 2021, we've completed about 55 of those. There's about six of the items in the assessment that are still in work. One of the function or features that the assessment did bring with it was one of the SWOT analysis charts, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So I wanted to cover a couple of the SWOT details. So we'll take a look at cybersecurity. And what have we done? We hired a security officer in December of 2020. Chris's bleak outlook is, it's not a matter of will we have an incident? It's a matter of when we will have an incident and have we prepared for it? That was the best quote I could get from him, so. Okay, what else have we done? Embracing cloud services, referenced earlier in the presentation was our checkout software, which is cloud-hosted. We didn't actually install any software, we simply configure what's provided. But we've also completed a limited solicitation for web hosting and content services for both the city and the county. So websites, web management, we'll be moving to a vendor-supported solution. I expect this to be completed probably in the month of January to where we can actually get off the ground and start the migration process. And training, we've initiated some subscription-based IT training curriculums to keep our IT skills current so that we're not falling behind. Okay, something I tackled my, as I, in my early days here, because we started right off into the fiscal year 23 budget. I wanted to get a good feel of where the, the budget was and has been historically for a couple of years back, the IT department. And what I very quickly came to realize was we were on a trend of increasing costs. I don't want to say significantly, but it's, it's an upward trend. So what I did try to do was figure out why we're on this trend. The fiscal year 19, you can see this is where we completed the assessment. And you can see this interesting dip in fiscal year 21 that was due to the pandemic. We had a lot of capital improvement projects that were delayed and we simply did not accomplish them. So in detail of why that trend is occurring, the security program is part of it. I mean, it's up and running, we've got robust security tools. As I mentioned earlier, it's an ever-changing landscape. We have to keep up. We have to keep up and the tools have to be constantly updated. And we also have to put in new tools as we discover they're either developed or we found gaps. For example, we did deploy a new risk management tool in fiscal year 22. This risk management tool helped us uncover and patch for one of the recent, it was called Log4JAM. If you saw any news articles of it, we would have been exposed to some of those risks, but the tool did help us identify and get those gaps covered. We've also employed annual cybersecurity training. It's not always very popular, but it does help make sure that everybody is thinking or taking cybersecurity very seriously. A lot of the subscription or most of the subscription based software includes moderate annual increases. And so we have to keep up with those. Larger user base, new employees, city and county wise, has caused an increase in all subscription software, so we had to grow our subscriptions. There was an approved change for ArcGIS licensing for the GIS software. This now allows city county users to access GIS basically almost as many of city and county users as needed. It used to be we were on a limited license number, so if everybody was, was in from GIS, there would, somebody else needed it, they would have to wait. The new licensing structure does take care of that, we can access it whenever needed. Zoom licenses, what we're using right here, we've seen Zoom licenses double across basically about 18 months. And we had two positions in IT that were approved and filled, so all of these things add up to this unfortunate black line of, of increasing costs. Okay, coming to the end, I wanted to cover what's on our plate for calendar year 22. What do we want to try to get a focus on? My big task is to get the FY 23 budget process completed. Want to review and provide an in-depth analysis of the cost recovery structure and rates. Make sure we're allocating costs fairly between city and county and that city and county both understand what that rate structure is. Will provide a support for a number of projects. The city finance ERP system is on a needs assessment. Potential RFP coming up, we're helping their project manager make sure technologically he's getting all his question answered, questions answered. The city also has an e-track initiative to get building permits online. We have one of our systems people, Julia, she's had a lot of experience with e-track it, so she's been in a lot of the meetings with Tyler and the city team. We're going to accomplish the website migration to a hosted platform. And in sheriff's office, city PD, computer aided dispatch, records management system is coming up for replacement. We'll be participating in their RFP process for that. We've got a couple large capital improvement projects that are going to be running for this calendar year. We've got some core network switches in the city county building that need to be replaced. Those are numerous years old, those are greater than 10 years old, they don't get replaced very often. We are currently experiencing the shortage of, of equipment on the market. Those are not scheduled to arrive until May, so we can't get a start on those very soon. We're also going to be participating in the replacement of servers and storage for the dispatch center as a critical function. I want to make sure we get our strategic plan updated and make sure the planning or strategic planning process is well defined and transparent so that we incorporate a lot of stakeholders, business of the city and county side. I want to get an early start on the FY 24 budget, I don't want to be behind the curve again as I am for 23. And we're going to provide a review of our support process practices and procedures. We want to make sure we've defined our customer service standards and that we're striving for a customer centered culture. And that brings me to then my presentation. Are there any questions or comments that I can answer?
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, comments or questions from the commission?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas, appreciate it. Of course, the increased cost gets my attention. You will present, this coming fiscal year FY 23, this will be your first budget presentation to the commission. And I'm most interested in that, that cost trend line and the underlying components. So I guess my, my question is the detail, you know, how, how extensive will your presentation be? Can you tell us at this point? And is it, is it a significant concern regarding the trend lines more than you would expect? Say on a, not just an institutional basis, but on an industry trend line, would you say we are exceeding that or we're tracking it?
Commissioner McCormick, thank you for the question. I would say we're, we're on an industry standard. Many of the, much of the information I've seen out in the industry and what we saw in state government was the cloud and subscription based softwares do come with additional costs. The trend line looks kind of bleak because it's, it's a significant upward trend. It really comes out in, in, in a 5% kind of structure, we're about 5% over 22 projected right now, I haven't gone through the entire process. But I think we're on a very similar industry standard to that cost.
Thank you very much, I follow on, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Thomas, do you, you see that that 5% bump driven by any one particular expense, would it be, for instance, up charges by current vendors? Or would it be new or additional software components required?
Commissioner McCormick, it's, it's kind of a combination of, of both. We did have new software that we put in for risk analysis, risk mitigation. So that played a significant part of it. I would say it's about 50 50 between new software and just the annual increase.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Thomas, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Mr. Thomas, would you remove your sharing?
Mr. Mayor, I-
Have any other comments or questions for Mr. Thomas? Go ahead, Commissioner Logan. You have the floor, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few questions, curious as to how, I'm not even certain at all of, of how many employees have migrated home in the city and county operation and how big of a, an impact did that have on IT and S operations?
Commissioner Logan, that's a good question. We're supporting on an ongoing basis probably about 75 to 100 users per week on, that are working remote. When they're connecting remote or request assistance, all we know is a remote, we don't know the reason, we don't know the length of time. They may be working remote briefly. But it's seems to be ongoing.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, a couple more quick questions, hopefully. So you talked about some things coming up for 2022. One of them being a website migration and the other, the CAD RMS. I guess if I heard it correctly, replacement. Can you briefly describe the website migration? What that means and then is the CAD RMS a replacement of, of the existing systems or is it more an update?
If I can do the CAD or Commissioner Logan, if I can do the CAD RMS first, I think that's a quicker answer. From my understanding so far of the, of the process, it looks like it is a replacement rather than an update.
Thank you.
Commissioner Logan, as, as far as the, wow, can you repeat the first part of your question?
About, you talked about the web, you were looking at, I think it was a city county website migration. Generally, just very briefly, what is, what does that mean?
Thank you, Commissioner Logan. The website migration, what we did with our limited solicitation for a little background, we reached out to at least three companies. They reviewed the city website, the county website, all three companies. They provided bids in a limited solicitation, so it's, it's formal. We looked at their offerings and basically have a web committee made up of city web managers and county web managers and a couple of members from IT. They reviewed the proposals, they determined what they want to recommend for the preferred vendor based on what the vendor offered. The process, basically the vendor will migrate, will, will move the city's website and the county's website simultaneously, so they plan to bring in two teams. One to work on the city side, one to work on the county side. They will migrate them from on premise infrastructure, so on premise servers. They will migrate them to their company's internet portal where they can then provide updated information and propose to change or make changes to the website according to what the city and county web managers would like to see.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Do we have any other comments, Commissioner Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I guess on that point with the website migration, you have, have we actually awarded a contract or we're, we're still waiting to award that contract?
We are almost to the point where we would be ready to award the con, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Dean. We are almost ready to award the contract. We are going through the final stages of the limited solicitation process according to the county procurement policy.
Great, thank you. If we could maybe get an update when that does get awarded, I know that one of the vendors, from what it sounded like, was a vendor that both of us are using for a few different other pieces of software. So updates when that happens would be really excellent.
Commissioner Dean, I can make sure we get you an update.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Thomas, you, we appreciate your presentation. And look forward to hearing from you again.
Mayor and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity.
Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, would you check to see if we have any raised hands or anybody from the public?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I see no hands raised online and I have no written public comment on this item.
Okay. Agenda items for next meeting, February 1st, 2022 will be Tuesday and the point of contact is Nadine McCarthy. Her phone number is 8304. Do you have any finer comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let everyone know, effort to communicate well. This morning, we made our power transition, if you will, our peaceful transfer of power. So Commissioner McCormick will be the chair this year, 2022, Commissioner Rolf is the vice chair for the commission. And I have fallen in rank to the member. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we've done that so that if you're reaching out to the chair, the commissioner, whatever, it's Commissioner McCormick.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Commissioner McCormick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Huthausen. And it was peaceful, even though Commissioner Rolf made a go cat statement, I, I seconded that, that statement and really forward the ballgame this weekend.
Oh.
Right, they voted down the grizzly leadership and the cats have taken over now.
And by the way, I am sorry, there is one other thing that we need to discuss, it just came to my mind. Madam, Manager Hollis Shaw, are you on?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, you want to bring that vaccine publicity up?
Yeah, great, yes, please, thank you. At last administrative meeting, the city commission had a conversation around the ARPA dollars and some priorities within them. In advance of that meeting, the man, Mayor and I were in a conversation and were asked if the city was making a contribution towards the vaccination publicity and that the county had had a donation already put together and talking with Drenda at the public health that those dollars set aside were actually the dollars from ARPA already planned to go to the public health side. And at one point, I do believe we had a conversation within the joint, at least I know I talked with Roger at one point, I can say it that way. I know it's been a conversation among commissioners before, which is to help make donation to the nonprofit who's managing the publicity around the importance of vaccination. And in particular, as I understand it, Lewis and Clark County has more vaccination publicity need than the city may. But with the newest Omicron, I don't know that it matters so much as just continuing to vaccinate. So the big picture question I had was first, I, I think our city commission may want to consider adding that up to $50,000 donation is suggested by Drenda from the ARPA funds to this nonprofit that's doing the, the vaccination medevac and so forth. But was curious if the county was planning to do the same.
Thank you, Madam Hollis Shaw, and I don't see a problem with that because whatever affects the county will definitely affect the city, no doubt about it. Because we're wanting the same, so to speak. And I fully support the campaign to bring awareness. And I'll turn it over to the rest of the commissioners to hear what they have to say, Commissioner Fever.
I don't know the nonprofit that is conducting the campaign to promote vaccination, so that, that would be useful.
Thank you, Commissioner Fever. Roger, I know that you had been working with Drenda and the team on the campaign work. Is she, Drenda is the public health team leading or is it that you all are working on a donation to the nonprofit that's handling the communications?
So, Mr. Mayor and everyone on the, on the call today, the health department's taking the lead on that, Rachel, and recently our commissioners actually approved a contract for the health department to work with a company to put together a marketing plan on that as well. I can't recall the name of the company offhand, maybe some of our commissioners may recall the name of it, but that was just, just a few days ago that the commissioners approved that contract for the health department to work on that campaign.
Mr. Mayor, Roger, I might misspeak here, but correct me, but I think it was Strategies 360? Yes. Thank you, yes, that's it, okay.
Did you get your question answered there, Commissioner Fever?
I know Strategies 360, so thank you very much for the info.
Yeah, what, are there any other comments from the city commission on this project? Are we going ahead with it? Are we going ahead with it? Okay, I guess we are.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, tomorrow night, Wednesday, is our next administrative meeting. And we'll have that circle up and confirmation of those ARPA dollars and suggest bringing this up then and we can add it in as a potential item to fund there. But also, I'm curious if the county is contributing beyond what the Board of, Board of Health was already set aside by way of ARPA dollars or if those, the contribution, if the county is, is maintaining just that primary ARPA set aside for the Board of Health vaccination campaign.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner.
Commissioners, I, I guess I'll reengage Roger here and the other commissioners. I, I don't know that we had contemplated anymore because we had, we were talking about a set aside for that out of our ARPA dollars and then of ARPA dollars dedicated specifically for public health to do vaccination outreach came down. And I think when we did the contract through that, that funding source, we dedicated what, seventy-five thousand dollars? Roger, is that correct? And what we understood, I think, was that we, that that money was dedicated for this purpose and it was unnecessary to dedicate money from other sources for that because that was specifically came down for that. So if that, if that's not enough money, I haven't heard that yet. So Drenda and the group that was, that we were funding to work with Strategies 360, I think they said that was the amount they wanted or needed to do or meet their goals. So if that's not it, I'm, I'm open to considering more, but I hadn't heard that yet, that there was an interest in more money for the project, so. And I guess that's it.
That's good enough, Commissioner, we didn't hear anything, and I think this was just FYI from Manager Hollis Shaw, I'm assuming.
Yeah, the, the, thank you, Mayor, just to clarify, the, yeah, just to understand, we were approached and asked if the city was wanting to make a match in a contribution to support the vaccination efforts. But if the seventy-five thousand is sufficient, then perhaps the city doesn't need to, so I can follow up with the, trying to.
No, 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 I, I think we should move ahead and discuss this instead of just saying the city doesn't need to. I think we'll discuss it tomorrow and we'll get back to the other commissioners about what we, what we plan to donate and all of that. Any other finer comments from the commission? If not, welcome again, Commissioner Fever, Commissioner Reed, congratulations, Commissioner Rolf. This meeting is adjourned.